I'd like to call the order. Our Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two board discussion meeting will begin with our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is a meeting of the school board in public for the purposes of conducting school corporation business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There will be time for public participation as indicated on the agenda. All board members were provided with background information prior to this evening's meeting in preparation. Meeting is being livestreamed. Our public comment forms are over here near Attorney Elwood. Anyone would like to address the board at the appropriate time, please fill out one of those forms and return it to the board table. Before we get started, though, I'm going to go on a turn and, Trustee Vasquez, I noticed a lot of us are wearing jeans, which is kind of unusual for the board at their meeting. Can you explain why that's happening today?
Yes, yes. Well, this week is jovial jeans. It's sponsored by the Education Foundation, and so staff members will be wearing jeans and will donate five dollars for that cause. And so that money will go right back for our students.
Awesome. I see the money is sitting here, so everybody knows that's not like March Madness school money. It's just the jean money.
And I think they said that the president of the board has to pay double.
Oh, I'm not shocked.
All the papers say aye.
That's fine. Thank you. Alright, we'll begin this evening with our good news review video.
Hi, I'm Rigley Barcelli, and this is Good News at Portage. Four of our Portage High School Business Professionals of America students are participating in the Indiana BPA State Competition. They have been competing this weekend and will finish up tonight. The award ceremony is tomorrow morning, so we look forward to posting those results this week. The Portage High School MCJROTC cadets took first place in last weekend's Midwest Regionals competition at Purdue University. They edged out Ben Davis High School to bring home the overall win. Congratulations. Earlier this year, we highlighted China, a Willow Creek Middle School student who wrote her own book, Encourage Yourself. After reading it to a group of our first graders from Aylesworth Elementary School, China received a lot of emails about where to buy her book. Not only did she write and publish the book, but she is marketing it as well. You can now purchase Encourage Yourself by visiting China's website at www.chinadollscreations.com. Congratulations to Team B and Team K on advancing to the VEX Worlds competition after an impressive showing at this weekend's state meet. Team K earned the State's Build Award for their robot and earned a personal best in the skills challenge. Team B finished fifth overall at the state meet and had an impressive skills ranking. Great job and good luck at Worlds in Dallas. PHS junior Peyton Peel participated in this weekend's state gymnastics meet held at Ball State University. She made an impressive showing and finished in a tie for sixteenth place out of forty-six participants on the vault. Great job on what has been a wonderful season. We are Portage proud.
We have board reports. Do we have any board reports?
The food pantry, Menards is having a food drive for the pantry during this entire month of March, so a huge thank you to Menards for doing that. And a reminder to all who participate in the distribution of food items. The distribution is the first, second, and fourth Thursday of the month from ten until twelve at thirty-five sixty Willow Creek. And on the third Thursday, it's from four until six. That's just a reminder. So there will be a meeting tomorrow that I will be attending with the food pantry. The Portage Township Education Foundation, the board is excited that one of the grants funded by them was included in the newsletter. The description is as follows. "The sixth graders of Fagley Middle School read a variety of picture books featuring diverse characters written by diverse authors, delving into various topics in American history." Many of these books were funded by the grant from the Portage Township Education Foundation in a grant submitted by Mrs. Malaski last year. Students used the books as a vehicle for discussion. They made connections, wrote brief summaries, determined the theme, and gave each book a personal rating. So that's another great example of how this foundation impacts student learning. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I do have one update as well. Just wanted to wrap up the legislative session that we had, which ended on March the eighth, late, 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 late on March the eighth. It ended with few education-related surprises. A few of them did die, so that's a good thing, and some interesting ones passed. The controversial CRT bill did not survive. The referendum to share with charter schools died as well. The special education due process change and elimination of non-disclosure agreements died. The school and public library liability or book banning, that didn't pass either. No school board declaration of political party language reappeared, and no change in business personal property tax, which is a huge victory for our taxpayers. But there are four that passed that impacts our school district as a whole. The school board public comic requirement, which really doesn't impact us because we're already adhering to that rule. The fast foot completion requirement, a watered-down version of that one did pass. The transgender girls ban from sports was one that did pass, and the ACLU has already indicated a lawsuit that's forthcoming regarding that one. And then a three-day limit on e-learning days as part of the required one-eighty. So that's something that I think we're all trying to still figure out, is what does that mean for our school calendars? They already have built-in e-learning days. So those four did pass, so I just wanted to say thank you to constituents and board members who did reach out to our senators and our representatives to let them know your opinions on certain bills. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Turned out it wasn't so bad.
Right.
Wasn't great, but wasn't. Okay, next we have our superintendent's consent agenda, which has the approval of the personnel report for March the fourteenth, the donation report, and the facility use request report. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Here, you're none. Call roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams Jess. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes. President Miletta.
Yes.
If I may, just mention, because this time of year we do start to get retirements. Rhonda Burge, fifth grade at South Haven, twenty-four years of service, and Janie Sedal, who teaches PE at the high school, eleven years of service. And also interesting on this report, Mr. Lessich and I have been in conversation for about a month. He and I went into the principalship together, and he came to me about a month ago, right? And really wants to go back and service those South Haven kids again after being there for three years. So Dr. Stevens and Dave went over to South Haven last week, right? And Dave and I also met with the IT team. It's great for our kids, of course bittersweet for IT, but he's excited and up for the challenge. It's great for our families and our kids. It's going to be a great transition. Most of the families already know him, so it's a great thing, and we're excited for Dave. And of course glad that he's willing to step right back in for a smooth transition for our feelings.
Well, congratulations. We know you did a great job there before, so I'm sure you'll pick right up where you left off. I know of everything that you've done here in the administration side, so that I'm sure they'll miss your leadership. And we came a long way since you left the principalship and came over here, so good luck to you. Congratulations. Okay, next we have our board's consent agenda, which has the meeting minutes of our regular board meeting from February the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Here, you're none. Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams Jess. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Alright, we'll move into old business. First order we have are the bid opening for the fuel bids. Attorney Elwood.
Yes, so the deadline to receive was March eleventh, twenty twenty-two. I say that because we did receive one today at eleven fifteen. So that will be returned, reopened, or not opened pursuant to the bid specs. And we received three, one on the tenth, one on the eleventh, and a second one on the eleventh, so I will open those at this time. This is from Co-Alliance LLC. Brand of gasoline specified Marathon, total price per gallon eighty-seven octane, two-point-seven-zero-three-zero, eighty-nine octane, two-point-eight-eight-zero-eight. Diesel fuel bid. Ultra-low sulfur diesel number two, total price per gallon three-point-two-one-nine-five. Ultra-low sulfur diesel with winter additive, three-point-two-four-four-five. Pickerton Oil. Eighty-seven octane, two-point-eight-six-six-three-three, eighty-nine octane, two-point-five, I'm sorry, three-point-zero-five-five-seven-three. I read the wrong line. Diesel ultra-low sulfur diesel number two, three-point-one-seven-nine-eight-four, and diesel with winter additive, three-point-two-zero-nine-eight-four. Petroleum Traders Corporation. With extra sealant. Eighty-seven octane, two-point-six-seven-three-zero, eighty-nine octane, two-point-five, or excuse me, two-point-eight-five-oh-eight. Diesel, diesel number two, three-point-one-eight-one-two, and diesel with winter additive, three-point-two-one-seven-two. Recommend that you take these under advisement.
Do we have a motion to, if Attorney Elwood take the fuel bid openings, fuel bids, under advisement?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams Jess. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Will you have that ready for our next meeting, Mr. Elwood?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have our second reading and approval of the NEOLA policies as listed on the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the NEOLA policies?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
I'd like to just review some of them.
Please do.
So there were thirty policies that we reviewed, discussed, and we've been presented for approval, of course. Trustee Wilkie and I met with our superintendent. The policies, some of them that were addressed are the employment of the superintendent. Section five oh four, which prohibits discrimination based on disability. Employment of the staff, professionals, certified and non-certified. The legal settlement for the enrollment of students. ADM, which is the average daily membership, which impacts state funding. These counts are submitted in September, every September and February to the Department of Education. Also, there's a policy on school board meetings held through electronic means. Non-discrimination and equal employment for all. The last one that I wanted to bring to your attention is the education equity mindset commitment and action. It defines it as that is what is culturally responsive, student-centered, and access for all, and advocates, includes advocates for equity needs. The purpose of this policy is to establish a framework for the mitigation or substantial reduction of bias, as well as factors affecting student achievement and learning experiences, and to promote learning and work environments that respect and value diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. This is all, all this can be found on the website, correct? So I just wanted to give you just a few examples.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? Here, you're none. Call roll, please.
Trustee Williams Jess. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have our recommendation for the approval of the elementary math adoption. Dr. Ellen is.
The PTS Elementary Math Textbook Adoption Committee formally is recommending the adoption of Indiana Reveal Math by McGraw-Hill. The total adoption cost is five-hundred-three-thousand dollars, excuse me, five-hundred-three-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-four dollars and seventy-eight six, seventy-eight cents for a six-year adoption. I have from Dr. Stevens some information from McGraw-Hill Reveal. Students can see math all around them. It asks them what they wonder and what is their math superpower. Students explain their work, explain their thinking, and help reteach a dismissive conception. They have fluency math practice in each lesson. They have ignite activities to engage them and introduce the lessons, a hint at the math they will learn. Curious activities to think about the picture and invite them to the mathematics facts of the day. Digital games, K-25 spiral reviews. Past work is archived in the student portal, so parents can see it. It's built for Indiana because they saw where the national and Indiana standards overlapped. They kept and filled in the holes of what was needed for Indiana standards. There's professional development included. Office hour PD is available for individuals and small groups. We also through here have specific feedback from the teachers. All teachers on the adoption committee rated and determined three series that they wanted to take to the group of all elementary math teachers. And this series is the series that all teachers, how many ended up giving us feedback? One hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve people submitted their input. Eighty-four percent of those chose this one as their first choice.
Yes. And of those selected of the top three, all were research-based, so we were comfortable with any of the three selections.
So I see the makeup of that committee, just for public record, included administrators, teachers, and parents?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the elementary math adoption?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Just one question for the audience. Why a six-year versus like a three-year adoption for math? Was it a price difference or anything like that? More curious than anything.
Adoptions are, historically have been six-year adoptions, and thus the, this has been designed to be the pricing of that for over a six-year period. So they didn't, they don't really offer other options.
Okay.
We did do, when we had previously done, when we, with our last adoption for math, when we looked at, if it was what sat us. We could do a one-year or a six-year. That was the two options, and our teachers had really wanted us to invest the adoption for the six years because they felt as though then they really could buy into learning it and digging into it. Now, previously, it seemed to be taking on a lot, fully knowing that in previous days, you get that printed book and it's done and over with, and updates can't happen for six years. But fortunately now, with the digital, you have the updated version, so if there's any updates, then it's up to date. So you're not, you know, as soon as it's printed, it's old. So we felt a little, we feel more comfortable now with six years and the pricing, the savings that we get.
Thank you. So will students have consumables as well?
Oh, yes.
Practice books?
Yes.
Okay. And how will parents, is there anything that you plan for parents in terms of having an in-service for them? Because, you know, as we know, a lot of, a lot of our families, they help their children at home.
So yes, along with.
So yes, we do plan to have, and Melissa will help with some videos that we'll share with our families. But a part of that is with each lesson, there are tutorials and enrichment videos that come with this series. So there'll even be a link to that, so that those parents, they'll get used to the vocabulary of our instruction. And then they'll also have a link to a video that even if they need to be brushed up on some of the vocabulary in the, in the practice, that'll be an available option to all parents as well. And so the child can log in during the day if we have some center time, things like that, and they just don't quite remember what it was that they, they can get a refresher. But they can also go home and that parent can watch that with the child and help them see the steps that were explained in the classroom as well.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or discussion? Here, you're none. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams Jess.
Next, we have our recommendation and approval of the Portage Township School summer school hours.
So elementary summer school will be kindergarten through fourth grade, June sixth to June thirtieth, Monday through Thursday, eight-thirty to noon. Kindergarteners will be released at eleven-thirty at Central Elementary. Middle school will be fifth through eighth grade, June sixth through June thirtieth, Monday through Thursday, again, no Fridays, from eight-thirty to noon at Fagley. And PHS will have our typical two sessions. Session one, June one through June twenty-eight, seven-thirty to noon. And session two, July five through July twenty-eight, seven-thirty to noon.
Do we have a motion to approve the Portage Township's summer school hours?
Make a motion?
Second.
The motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Just another question regarding summer school. Do we plan to have, especially with learning loss and things with our students? Are we planning to have like a jump start or something to kick off our transition of like our middle schoolers to the high school, other than the one day that they get, and the same thing for the elementary students to middle school?
I will tell you, we've not gotten that far yet.
Okay, got it. Okay, got it. Okay.
To be, to be continued, that discussion.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
So.
Great, thank you.
So I also saw that the transportation will be provided and meals will be charged. Are we going to have any incentives for the students to participate? I know in the elementary level, children love picnics, maybe at the end of that session, something like that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. They, they do build in some different incentives. Yes, yes.
At the high school, we don't.
Oh, they do incentives as well. Yes, absolutely.
You don't have any idea?
I don't have exactly. I can get you some more information on that, though. The specifics, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? If you're not called, roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams Jess. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next, we have our recommendation and approval of the Portage Township School data backup contract.
So our systems are, have been moved to a cloud base, as you know, for the most part, for security purposes, but we do still have several systems that are on property. We do use Think Tank, and we've used them for thirteen years now. It's done a great job for us over the years, but it is at its end of life, and we want to make sure we have the proper backup. So after researching systems, we are looking at best practices, and we're looking at a three-year agreement with Vista IT Group for the amount of thirty-two thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars to include new utility products, support, and cloud storage.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the Portage Township School data backup contract?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Here, you're none. Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams Jess. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Okay, next we have our approval for the overnight field trip by the Portage High School Robotics and the MCJROTC for Robotics Championships Indianapolis, March eleventh through twelfth. Portage High School Gymnastic State Championship in Muncie on March eleventh through twelfth. Portage High School BPA for competition on March thirteenth through fifteenth. And the Portage High School US Robotics National Championships in Iowa on April seventh through the ninth. Do we have a motion to approve the overnight field trips?
Motion to approve?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? I know a couple of these are passed, and congratulations for the outstanding efforts there, and good luck to our BPA in the national championships. That's really cool. Call roll, please.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams Jess. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Next, we have the approval to continue board docs contract for April first, twenty twenty-two through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
All I have to say is please.
They found a way to make us dependent on them, didn't they?
Yes.
He was very organized.
Do we have a motion to approve the board docs contract?
I make a motion to approve the board docs.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
All I want to mention is that it's two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Thank you. Call roll, please.
Trustee Williams Jess. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Next, we have our approval of the increase to the USW MOU.
Yeah, so what this is, was an MOU that Attorney Elwood worked with the USW representative, as well as Sally Clark and Nick Groton. Did you want to explain it, Attorney Elwood?
Yeah, I can. So this is the same thing we've done for transportation employees for years. Once they reach a certain number of years, the steps end. So the way our contracts are written, they don't get that increase unless we add an MOU. We did not add it to the contract, which wasn't caught by any of us until afterwards, so that's what this is. And there's two different ones, because it's effective January one, that raise, and then July one.
Very good.
Actually, I think Nick caught it.
And that's retroactive, then?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve the increases to the USW MOU?
Make a motion?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Here, you're none. Call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams Jess.
Next, we have our recommendation to award the Portage High School Football Scoreboard Bid.
We do have Andy here from Alliance. If you have any questions attached, you have the bid recommendation. It was advertised in the Post and the Times, February twenty-third and March second. The bid opening was held March ninth at ten AM. Attorney Elwood was in attendance. Two bids were received. The bid tabulation is attached for your review, and the recommendation is to award the PHS Football Scoreboard to Midwestern Electric for the contract amount of two-hundred-fifty-seven thousand one-hundred-ninety-six dollars.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the award of the Portage High School Football Scoreboard Bid?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Miletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams Jess. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Andy, what's the timeline on the scoreboard? Well, if you step up to the microphone, please. Since you came out here, we figured we'd like to say something.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, so I'm gonna say it's probably not gonna be done by the time we have kickoff. However, we expedited this part of the project in order to, if there's any way we can make that happen, we will make it happen. Um, now that we have the contractor selected, they can verify all their supply chain components. And, um, we should know pretty quickly because we will approve, uh, a shop throwing outside a question about the appearance of it. That has not been determined for, for certain. There will be a, a submittal so that, so that, um, Dr. Allen S can review it before we authorize and proceed with it. At that time, we will know the delivery timeline.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not anticipating before the fall of twenty-three.
Yeah.
Just because. You just don't know.
Right.
So if we, at least then, if we assume fall of twenty-three and it's sooner, great.
Right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our superintendent reports and updates.
Um, I wanted to share with the board that we are working with our parents currently. Um, a survey went out mid-last week regarding their needs for childcare with the changes in school start times. We're starting to get a lot of, um, information back about that. Um, we're working with our community partners, um, both the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and, um, also other, other providers in the area. Should they have open spots? We're also looking at what school-based programs we can house, not only with our employees, but the employees of those other organizations to have after-school opportunities, um, that would be provided. Also, just this week as well, it went out, excuse me, end of last week. Um, the Boys and Girls Club is doing a new program in the morning, a Boys and Girls Club Kid Stop, starting as early as six AM. Um, you could do a weekly price, um, or a daily price. So there are also, many of our partners have been very responsive to the various needs of families and have been partnering really well with us. Melissa tends to be that point of contact to make sure they're very aware, and then brings it back to Dr. Stevens and I so that we can continue to work, to work to make sure that we're navigating that. So those results will help us tremendously. Um, also, just sharing, one of the things that we have in the works for this summer. Dr. Stevens and I were talking about what we would like to do to make sure that students are reading this summer. So we have in motion, um, with Esser Dollars, about eighty thousand dollars for nonfiction reading books, five per student. And we're gonna be doing some various incentives over the summer. They will go home with those, every child, and then we will be doing some various incentives over the summer to keep them reading. Um, they will be their books to keep. Um, we're working with Skolastic on that. So I'm gonna ask you to approve that retroactively. Um, but again, those are Esser Dollars and dollars well spent. Um, so we're excited for that opportunity for our students. Um, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Lessich and our media, um, specialists and our media clerks, uh, about two weeks ago after, um, we've worked closely as a, a, an administrative team on the design of the media centers. So as you know, those will be completed this summer, and it was a great meeting. They are very eager to get their media centers, um, up and running and are full of all kinds of creative ideas and just really excited. They're, they're a great group of ladies and they're just really eager. They really want to book us this summer, so we're still trying to make that happen, and we have high hopes for the future of what that can look like. Um, but if nothing else this year, they just want to be on a bus and reading to kids, so we're gonna work through that. Um, I want to thank the curriculum teams and our textbook adoption committee. Um, the curriculum teams have been working extremely hard with, uh, their curriculum work. There's no doubt it's, it's been an undertaking. Our site-based teams are hard at work as they're, as you know, getting certified under Save and Collaborative. It's been, it's been a, a process as they're putting in their artifacts at each school. And as I believe I shared with you in an update, Dr. Stevens has confirmed that we will be working on the second level, which is, um, Common Instructional Strategies for next fall. So that will be a great, a great opportunity in, in the right direction next year. Our drivers, we have had a lot of compliments here lately. It's been great to hear from parents and, and the community about, um, our drivers and the extra care that they take for our students. And I had shared that with, um, Kelly, who is our super, excuse me, our transportation director. I had a meeting today with Milay, who oversees, as you know, maintenance and custodial. And I can't thank them enough for all the hard work that they put in every single day, um, between just the, the typical things that they do all the way to the, they'll drop whatever's being done that needs to be accomplished to help someone out. So it's, it's a great team effort, and without hesitation, they're always there to help. Um, our food service crew, same thing. They do great things for kids. They're short-staffed in many of our kitchens, and they are doing a great job. And our custodial crew is kind of pitching in, in ways that maybe they don't in normal situations because they recognize they're short-staffed. Our assistants, as always, stepping up and doing a great job. And our clerical, as we're in the buildings, we're watching teachers, we're visiting classrooms, we're walking our buildings, and everyone is just hard at work to do what's right for our students. And it's a positive environment that is, is working for the good of kids, so it's just a good place to be. So I just appreciate everyone's efforts, and I, I think it never hurts to just point it out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Co-? Go ahead.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I just want to, um, recognize Mr. Stills and the high school staff for the sectional game. What an unbelievable job logistically they did. And, uh, it was awesome to see that gym packed with red.
It sure was.
Good stuff.
It was loud in there.
Yeah, it was. It was cool.
Okay, are there any items not on the agenda the board would like to bring up?
I'm gonna pig, kind of piggyback off of what Attorney Elwood just stated. I had a chance to hang out with the track people. Oh, my gosh, there were people everywhere. There had to be a thousand people in the fieldhouse this past Saturday. Um, it was the last qualifier that was close enough for school districts in Northwest Indiana to Central Indiana to qualify for the state tournament, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. And let me tell you, Coach Haas, Coach Tolliver, Coach Fisher, uh, the whole entire crew. They had it going with the walkies and the communication, getting people from point A to point B. They did a really good job this weekend, so, and I want to say good luck to, uh, we do have some qualifiers. So I want to say good luck to them on the twenty-fifth, our young ladies and the young men. They did a really good job this weekend.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the board?
Well, we also have spring break coming up.
We do.
Next week, so hopefully everybody enjoys their time, uh, with their friends and their families and, and gets some rest and have a lot of fun.
Get refreshed for the finals, right?
Baseball's here.
I just got back today. Okay, we didn't receive any public comment forms, I assume?
We did not.
Okay.
Okay, so our next meeting, uh, will be at the Portage High School Main Gymnasium at five PM on March the twenty-eighth. And I think that's it for now, so just means adjourned. Thank you.